Christianson.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Peck.
Here.
And Santos.
Here.
Mayor Coombs, we have a quorum.
Stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, united, civil, with liberty and justice for all.
Eighty-one wishing to speak at first call public invited to be heard will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first call public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their name on the list will have an opportunity to speak at final call public invited to be heard or on any of the public ordinance items on second reading. So now we have the December thirteenth minutes to approve. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move approval of the December thirteenth, 2016 minutes.
Right.
All right, that's moved in seconded.
I would like to make a correction on the minutes.
Oh, okay.
It's number ten. The item is removed from the consent agenda. It says that Peck moved and seconded the motion.
Yeah, that's pretty tricky.
I will take credit, but I don't think that's right.
Good catch. Okay, let's vote on the corrected minutes that was pointed out by Councilmember Peck. That passes seven to zero. Then we have the December twentieth minutes to approve. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move passage or approval of those minutes.
All right. It's been moved in seconded. Let's vote. And that passes seven to zero. And then we had a special meeting on December twenty-first to approve. Councilmember Moore?
I move approval of the December twenty-first minutes.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in seconded. Let's vote.
I should abstain. I was not there.
Okay, that's right. That passes five to zero, six to zero. Councilmember Finley, she was absent. I remember she was sick that night. All right?
Maybe.
Oh, that's right. She was on vacation. Valerie, are there any agenda revisions?
Yes, Mayor Coombs. We are pulling item, general business item 11A at the applicant's attorney's request. That'll come back on the twenty-fourth.
All right. So is there a report from the city manager?
Yes, Mayor, counsel. I'm going to ask Dave Christian to come up. He's from Ironman. He's going to make a special announcement regarding one of our team members in the organization. So I'll turn it over to Dave.
Can you hit the button? Thank you, counsel. Thank you, guests, residents of Longmont. Appreciate you guys giving me just a few short moments of your time. I work for a company called Ironman. You may have heard of us. We put on triathlons around the world. The most famous one that we have is actually out in Hawaii, and we call that our World Championships. Just like Boston Marathon, it's kind of a really difficult event to get into, and we have a unique opportunity tonight to honor one of your coworkers, one of the public servants of this community of Longmont, and somebody that we all admire and look up to in our community, and his name is David Moore. David's got this unique opportunity. As I'd mentioned, most people have to qualify to get to the World Championships in Kona, and Dave was actually randomly selected amongst ten other people to have a unique opportunity to go as a special guest of ours, and we just really wanted to take an opportunity in front of his peers. This morning, we surprised him at the command staff meeting for Longmont Police Department, which was a lot of fun. Took him by surprise. He had no idea, and it was a lot of fun to do that this morning. And again, we just wanted to take a moment and ask for two things of this group. One is that we all hold them accountable. He's got a long journey ahead of him, so we all have to check in on him from time to time and make sure that he's got the sleep that he needs and the workouts that he needs to be able to get this really large mountain that he needs to climb in front of him. And the second thing, and this is more towards the guests that are in the room, we as community members need to make sure that we look after those that are looking after us. When given an opportunity, make sure that we're thanking those that are carrying a badge, that are taking good care of our communities and protecting us and making sure that we get to sleep well at night. And David's team does that for us every single night without any questions asked. So a big thank you to him, and we've got a Hawaiian lei that's ready for him. As soon as he wears this, he's committed, so now he's got to go to Kona, and we just wanted to, we just want to make sure it's a sealed deal. So again, counsel, thank you for your time. But this is for... One last thing I'll just make mention of. I've worked with the city of Longmont for quite a while. There's, I do this around the world. I put on events around the world, and I can tell you without a doubt that Longmont stands above many of the groups that I work with in terms of organization, in terms of leadership. People like Dave, people like Mike Bell, Len Marquez, Michelle Gomez, people that I work with on a daily basis in this town that's a great job. You guys should be very proud of your community. So thank you again for your time. Okay.
Thank you.
So, Mayor, we're going to, yeah, we're going to, Mayor, we're going to ask you to hold Dave accountable since you're the exercise beast of the group.
All right. So now we have proclamation designating the week of January twentieth through the twenty-first, or twentieth as, twenty-seventeenth, as honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Week in Longmont, Colorado. We've got some event sponsors that will accept the proclamation, so if you want to come down, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation, and then you're welcome to say a few words. A proclamation designating the week of January sixteenth through the twentieth, twenty-seventeenth, as all cultures, one voice honoring Dr. Martin L. King through Action Week in Longmont, Colorado. Whereas January sixteenth, twenty-seventeen marks the Dr. Martin L. King holiday in which we honor the civil rights work of Dr. King and countless supporters who sacrifice to sow the seeds for a movement of peace, equality, and justice for all. And whereas across the nation, in the state and in the city of Longmont, honoring Dr. King has become a day of service to our communities as well as a day of celebration, tribute, education, service, and solidarity. And whereas unity is fostered at the community level by strong partnerships between diverse people working together to form an inclusive community, and whereas on January sixteenth will be an opportunity for us all to come together to celebrate and commemorate the life, work, and legacy of Dr. King. This is made possible by our partners, Silver Creek Student Leadership Academy, Dr. King Committee, Longmont Multicultural Action Committee, and Lexmark Corporation have come together to ensure that the legacy and history of the civil rights movement and Dr. King remain alive for us all. Now therefore, I, Dennis L. Coombs, mayor, by the virtue of the authority vested in me and the city council of the city of Longmont, do hereby proclaim January sixteenth through the twentieth, twenty-seventeenth, as all cultures, one voice honoring Dr. Martin L. King through Action Week in Longmont, and I invite all to attend the events honoring Dr. King.
All right. That was actually our bridge version, by the way.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, and to the council. It's an honor to stand here and to accept the proclamation that was just read. So again, we thank you for taking the time and to allow us to present this to the community. I humbly accept the proclamation on behalf of the Dr. King Committee, which is one of many committees within the Longmont Multicultural Action Committee. I also humbly accept the proclamation on behalf of the LMAC, Longmont Multicultural Action Committee itself, as well as the students and the faculty at Silver Creek High School, namely the Silver Creek Student Leadership Academy. Dr. King's quest and his vision for justice and for peace continues to live on in the lives of many, as we know, and it is indicative by the folks that are here that are joining me this evening. I have some members from my own congregation. By the way, I'm Reverend James Ray of Second Baptist Church in Boulder. So we're again just thankful that we can continue to allow King's vision and his quest for equality and justice to live on in our actions, in our lives on a day-to-day basis. So I accept this proclamation, first of all, with a heart of gratitude, just thankful for all of the organizations, for all of the activists, for the pioneers that have come across the decades to make Dr. King's vision a reality. Thankful for the peace marches. I'm thankful for congregations and preachers and teachers everywhere who, again, are standing up for justice and equality on behalf of Dr. King. Also accept this with a heart of, with a spirit of hope, just hoping that as a group of people here who are under the sound of my voice, that we realize that Dr. King's vision was not one that was just to be stuck in the sixties, so to speak, but is to be continued throughout our lives and through our actions and throughout our thoughts. So I just ask right now that you all, again, just consider the work of Dr. King and allow that to be a sort of a gauge and a compass, not only morally but spiritually, as we go throughout our day-to-day activities. So again, I want to just say thank you, Mayor Coombs, for allowing us to present this proclamation to us, and we're inviting everyone here to, if you can, to attend the Dr. Martin Luther King Celebration at Silver Creek High School on January the sixteenth, and it'll start at nine with some service projects. The actual program will start at ten o'clock proper and go till twelve. So thank you again.
Well, thank you.
Yes. Okay, yes, and so I have about sixty people who are going to come down right now.
All right.
I'm going to ask those who are going to come out and join you.
I think they have a bus outside that's unloading cheese.
Good, that looks great. Okay, everybody look at me. Are we ready? Here we go. Let me do another one. Here we go. Thank you.
So now it's time for public invited to be heard, and first up on the list is Strider Benson. It's good to see you tonight, Strider.
Thank you. I appreciate you needed this. I messed up. Yeah, my name is Strider Benson, and thank you, nine fifty-one seventeenth. Thank you, Mayor Coombs and city council, and the Martin Luther King Committee and the Multicultural Action Committee. I just, I'm doing a sacrifice tonight. At this moment is the farewell address of the most dignified and most reviled and assaulted president in the history of our country, with the possible exception on both cases of Abraham Lincoln. And we are facing a crisis, a circumstance, and a challenge that we have never seen before in this country. We have a forthcoming cabinet who is mostly billionaires, and we have a person taking the highest office in the land who violently reviles people with handicaps and all kinds of other stuff that you know about, I don't have to mention. And we have incoming appointments, one of whom has a $500 billion dollar deal already signed with the government of Russia to crack open the Arctic and drill oil there for personal profit. We have a forthcoming Secretary of Education who is billionaire, who has spent her entire adult life to destroy the public education system of our country. And we have likely the number-one law enforcement officer in the country who is with the Ku Klux Klan. And I know this personally because he personally tried to prosecute my close friend, Albert Turner, who was one of the first four people ahead of me on the bridge on Bloody Sunday in Selma, Alabama, and was going to prosecute him, tried to, for voter fraud because he brought elderly black people in to register to vote in his county. He's a bricklayer. And was going to charge him two-hundred-and-fifty years in prison for helping elderly black people register to vote. Martin Luther King, the last time he called me to meet him in Washington, sent me back to Alabama. My name then was Arkansas, and he gave me $25 and a plane ticket and said, "Give 'em hell, Arkansas." And fighting for democracy, my first heroes were Tom Payne and Tom Jefferson, and I still believe in that all of my life. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Rivas?
Hello. It's my first time here, so excuse me nerves. I'm talking quick, and I only have three minutes here. What I'm here today...
First off, you've got to start by saying your name and your address, please.
Okay. Sorry. Yeah, right. Ryan Rivas. I'm at eighteen seventeen, eight seventeen in Corrigible Circle in Prospect or in Longmont. Right. And so I'm here to talk about the problem of homelessness, and I started, I came across it in context of Longmont, and I read an article the other day that related and reported that the business leaders of Longmont had come together and asked the city council to do something about the homelessness problem, specifically implement a camping ban. And so I learned two things from this article, and I got two things from this article. One was that we, there wasn't, I was happy to find out that there wasn't already a camping ban in Longmont, so that's good. Secondly, I was dismayed by the fact that our business owners in the community, who I would also take to be by fiat leaders in the community, would stand united, would stand united to further oppress and decriminalize an already a very oppressed and invisible population in our society, namely the homeless population. So I'm dismayed about that. Let's go to, talking about camping bans. Now, there's three reasons, three different fronts in which camping bans are not, in my person, in my eye, in my opinion, not a good idea. First, morally. These people don't have anywhere to go, hence homelessness, and there's simply not enough shelters in Longmont, in Boulder, in Denver, in Fort Collins to house, to shelter the amount of people, the amount of homeless people that are actually in Colorado. So just by that fact, there's going to be people sleeping out on the streets, and by making it illegal to do that, we are criminalizing what they are forced to do. We're making it illegal, legal for them to exist, and that is morally wrong. Secondly, let's talk about financially. Financially, this is just, it has been shown in a number of studies, one coming out of North Carolina and another one in Denver, that decriminalizing homelessness is actually pretty much a waste of money. It doesn't do very much, doesn't do very much to good, it doesn't actually help the homeless population, and counties, cities spend far more money enforcing these policies. Denver, last year, spent three-quarters of a million dollars simply enforcing homeless policies that criminalize the homeless, and the problem hasn't got easier, and we can only expect to do more if we start implementing camping bans here. Now third, let's go to, thirdly, let's talk about economically. Economically? Yeah. So let's take, let's take, let's take a different approach. What we need to do about the homelessness problem, I'm going to propose a solution here, is to change the narrative around homelessness. We see them, there's very negative stereotypes wrapped up around the homelessness population, and this is reflected in what our community thinks and what obviously our business leaders, our business leaders here think, and what we need to do is change the narrative around this by changing the policies. We need to stop with the twentieth-century solutions of criminalizing these people and marginalizing them, and start with twenty-first-century policies of integrating them into the society, providing housing for them and investing in them so they can become a part of our, a contributing part of our society and of our community. Criminalizing is not going to make it go away. You're only going to do, all you're going to do by doing that is further endanger the people who are already at the hands of an oppressive society.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that ends the first call public invited to be heard. So now we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor Coombs, your first item on consent is item eight A, ordinance two thousand seventeen oh-two, a bill for an ordinance designating 207 Bowen Street as a local historic landmark. Public hearing and second reading is scheduled for January twenty-fourth. Item eight B is ordinance two thousand seventeen oh-three, an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as Vans Ram Municipal Airport Hangar Parcel H twenty-five H P, the premises to Peter M. Maggerman and Stephen Croft tenants, organize, ordinance, excuse me, public hearing and second reading scheduled for January twenty-fourth. Item eight C is ordinance two thousand seventeen oh-four, a bill for an ordinance amending section four, point seven-two, point oh-four-five of the Longmont Municipal Code on Economic Development Incentive Payments, primary job creation, and the public hearing and second reading is scheduled for January twenty-fourth. Item eight D is ordinance two thousand seventeen oh-five, a bill for an ordinance repealing section ten, point two-oh, point oh-one-oh, aggressive begging, and chapter eleven, point three-eight, solicitation in or near street or highway of the Longmont Municipal Code. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for January twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen. Item eight E is resolution two thousand seventeen oh-one, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city, Boulder County, and the state of Colorado regarding the purchase and demolition of 507 Riverside Drive in Boulder County. Item eight F is resolution two thousand seventeen oh-two, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder Regional Emergency Telephone Service Authority for a fiber use license agreement. Item eight G is accept allocation of insurance proceeds and authorize the transfer of funds. Item eight H is approve two capital improvement programs, DRNO thirty-nine, which is Resilient Saint Rain, and WTR one-twelve, which is the North Saint Rain Pipeline. Item eight I is designate the bulletin boards outside the council chambers and the west entrance of the civic center as the official council agenda posting locations, and staff does not have a need to pull any items.
Does anybody else have anything to pull? Councilmember Finley?
I'd move passage of the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, the consent agenda's been moved in seconded. Let's vote.
Mayor Coombs, the first and only item on second reading is ordinance two thousand seventeen oh-one, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as Vans Ram Municipal Airport Hangar Parcel H thirty-four B, the premises to Michael T. Dugan and Catherine M. Dugan. And we do not have a formal staff presentation on this item.
Okay. I guess I'll open up the public hearing on ordinance twenty seventeen dash oh-one. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this? I guess seen no one, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance twenty seventeen dash oh-one. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'd like to move passage of ordinance twenty seventeen dash oh-one.
All right, it's been moved in seconded. Let's vote.
Mayor Coombs, the first and only item on second reading is ordinance two thousand seventeen oh-one, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as Vans Ram Municipal Airport Hangar Parcel H thirty-four B, the premises to Michael T. Dugan and Catherine M. Dugan. And we do not have a formal staff presentation on this item.
Okay. I guess I'll open up the public hearing on ordinance twenty seventeen dash oh-one. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this? I guess seen no one, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance twenty seventeen dash oh-one. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'd like to move passage of ordinance twenty seventeen dash oh-one.
All right, it's been moved in seconded. Let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, general business item has been removed from the agenda.
Okay. So now it's time for final call public invited to be heard. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak on any item or any subject? All right. All right.
I'm Janet Ulay. I live in Longmont, and I've been here before, and I'll come every year if I, when I can speak openly. I didn't get here in time to sign up. Sorry. I'm coming to speak to you about the wonderful things we have in Longmont and a few of the wonderful things we need in Longmont, mainly for our families and our kids. We have great arts, we have great restaurants, we have great beer places, we have great music, but we don't have great things for our children. If you're under eighteen and want to play ball or swim or ice skate, we don't have anything. So same old thing, we need it, and we just, we need it now. I have children, my grandkids are seventeen and nine, so they'll be gone by the time we have anything, but maybe their children. Maybe we'll have an ice rink that you can skate at all year round, on Christmas Day and on New Year's Day when you have a family together that doesn't do other things. Maybe we'll have a swimming pool that you don't, that's not so crowded that you can get into, or maybe we'll have indoor soccer places, maybe we'll have indoor roller skating, maybe we'll have indoor stuff, maybe we'll have things. So the children and the families in this town aren't taking their money and their time to other communities to doing this. I've had, I worked with scouts. The girls have to drive to Broomfield or Fort Collins forever for ice skating, five times a week. Parents go to, they buy gas there, they spend money there. We are spending all of our recreational money out of town. Now we go to Superior, to beautiful rinks and stuff. If you have a chance, go see the new ones they have over there. I just, we just need things for our kids, and I look at the long-range planning and I listen to that stuff, and I don't see it on the list. I hear it talked about, but I don't see it anywhere. So that's what I would ask for, is for facilities for our families and our children, because we have a bus to go to all the beer joints in town. We don't have a bus that will take the kids to Sandstone Park. It's a beautiful facility. The kids can't get there. I'm not letting my child, my grandchild ride a bike out there or walk. So we need to think about children, youth and families in our town. Thank you. I appreciate all you do for all of our town, and thank you.
Thank you. All right, now it's time for, yes, Councilmember...
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I heard, I don't know what you guys are, scouts? You guys here with scouts? I heard you guys talking, and there's somebody wanted to say something. Now's the time.
Yeah. Briefly.
Your internal clock just wants to sleep later, and I think it would just be a good thing if school schedules could be adjusted or in some certain way. That's about it.
Yeah, I should be at the school bar, but I totally agree. My daughter was the same way. You had to like pry her out of bed with a crowbar.
There you go. I do.
All right, is there anybody else who'd like to speak at final call public invited to be heard? All right, seeing no one, I'm going to close. Final call public invited to be heard. And now it's time for Mayor and Council comments. Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I was wondering, Harold, if you would put some input into the article that was in the paper about the pedestrians, because I think it was misleading a little bit, and clarify that?
Yes, at high level, you know, we've talked about the work that we've been doing with our homeless task force, and we presented the ordinance that allowed us to set the rules for facilities. That group is also, and it's really a behavioral in general, the group is also looking at items related to outdoor locations. We do have a technical advisory committee that's made up of folks from our traffic department, also from the police department, and they're looking specifically at defining specific criteria related to safety at the intersections. And so they're looking at things like speed, accidents, speed and accidents in the same location in narrow medians, and so they're defining that criteria and working on that issue. What it does not do, and I want to be very clear on this, is it does not prohibit pedestrian access in those intersections. The article made it sound like we weren't going to allow pedestrians to use it. That's not the case. Pedestrians can still use it. It's actually the safety issues related to being on the narrow medians that we have at some of our intersections.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I haven't done a business of the week lately, and I happened to notice in the chamber newsletter that Luminarya joined the chamber. Luminarya is a great lighting store at 2251 Ken Pratt Boulevard. They are locally owned, and they have a large number of lighting choices, and it's an awesome place to go buy lighting for your home. So go check out Luminarya.
Councilmember Christensen?
I wanted to reiterate that Martin Luther King Day is a wonderful day for us to celebrate the most, the thing, the single thing I think that America can be most proud of is that we have, we have grown. We have become more the country we claim we were, and that's something we can be very, very proud of. And Martin Luther King and all the other people who gave their lives are what made that possible. On another note, I would like to thank the guys at Blue Ribbon Farm for making my Christmas merrier when I went down there and bought a wreath and a tree, and I said to Charlie, "Gosh, it really smells good." And he said, "Oh, yeah, come over when you've bought the tree." So I went over and this made me realize why it's wonderful to have, to own your own business, because when things are slow, they had a big fire pit and they were grilling pork chops. And so this is what makes it nice to have your own business. You can do what you want. That's right. And I wanted to comment on the scout's message. I think we all experienced the same thing. When my father got tired of coming and yanking on my leg in the morning to get me out of bed, he just installed a fire alarm three feet above my head, and I could only turn it off by running down the stairs and turning a switch. So that's one system. I do understand what--
Yeah, I do understand, though.
It's very hard to get up in the morning.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just want to shout out to the city employees that have been taking care of some issues that I've come across, residents calling me on weekends, and being able to get those issues resolved within a couple of hours has been really valuable to the citizens of the community to know that when they call or councilman, and I call the city manager, that stuff gets done. It's just a very valuable service the city does provide, whether it be something, the snow at an intersection, or the other one was the straw blowing off of a development and got in all people's backyards, window wells and all that. So thank you for all the help that I get with helping my citizens. So thank you.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just very briefly, I'm looking forward to the Martin Luther King Celebration. I have yet to miss one. My daughter actually emceed it a couple of years ago. I wish with all my heart that more people would participate in our community. I don't know if it's because people just are unaware, it's not advertised all that well, but it's a great reminder of what we were, what we are, and what we are striving to be. And I think it's a good reminder, and I look forward to it. I'll be there. Thank you for coming tonight.
And I've gone to every single one of them, too, and I really appreciate what the Silver Creek Leadership Academy does to put that event on. Unfortunately, I'll be about 10 or 15 minutes late because I have an appointment from 8 to 10, but anyway, I'm going to be there and look forward to it. I'd also like to give a shout out to the city for the excellent job they did in clearing the snow. It was a big storm. It hit hard and fast, and there was a lot of snow that dumped during the middle of the night, and, you know, I thought that they did a good job. You know, Mother Nature does the best job, though. Those chinook winds at 80 miles an hour at 60 degrees is like a fleet of 100 snow trucks. So thank you that we didn't get the real cold weather like we did last year after we got the big snowstorm, and then it just stayed cold and miserable for, so anyway, we got a little lucky with this storm. But anyway, we have just this excellent city staff and crew that I think do a fantastic job in some big, huge storms. All right, anybody else? Councilmember Christensen?
I just remembered, I would urge everybody to remember that next week is an open forum, and so get your friends and neighbors to come. Talk about whatever you'd like, well, within reason.
All right. City manager, any comments?
No comments, Mayor, Council.
All right, city attorney, any comments?
No comments, Mayor.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.